I would like to call the Wednesday, June 13th Board of Education meeting at Stanley T. Williams Community Center at seven o'clock to order. Speaker.
Chairman Papa Holson.
Here.
Vice Chair Anafrio.
Here.
Secretary Cianna.
Here.
Jan Bosamo.
Here.
Carolyn Candelora.
Here.
Vincent Mace.
Mayor.
Cynthia Rose.
Slade.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors. No visitors comments? Student representatives? Hi guys, so great.
Thank you.
Big smiles.
Yeah, right. The North Branford High School Academic Awards Ceremony was held on May 16th with departmental awards, recognition awards, and scholarships announced and presented to students. There were 26 students recognized at advanced placement honors and students who completed three or more AP classes. Twenty-two students were recognized for the Presidential Award for Excellence. This award is awarded to students with a 90 cumulative average and 85th percentile on the ACT or SAT.
We also had a few students that were recognized over the past three weeks, so we have three of them here. NBHS Junior Caitlin May was named the school's recipient for the Shoreline Conference Social Studies Award Program. North Branford High School Junior Logan Franzen was named the school's recipient for the Shoreline Conference Math Award Program. And North Branford High School Sophomore Risa Health and freshman Elizabeth Serenas was recognized during the annual Shoreline English Department Writers Conference during May. Prior to the ceremony, students were provided an opportunity to submit their literary work for consideration.
On May 17th and 18th, Assistant Principal Greg Woods and Dean of Students Megan Lee presented at a regional PBIS workshop held in Mystic, Connecticut. During the two-day workshop, they presented information regarding the development and progress of the NBHS PBIS slash full circle program that acknowledges positive behaviors demonstrated by students. NBHS was one of only three high school-level schools selected to present this professional development workshop.
NBHS spring sports participated in the Shoreline NCIAC state tournaments with outdoor track, softball, baseball, girls lacrosse, tennis, and boys lacrosse qualifying for postseason competition. Girls lacrosse. Girls lacrosse captured their fourth Shoreline title and softball captured their fourth consecutive Shoreline title as well. A number of student athletes have been named All Shoreline for their respective sports during the spring season. Coach Connolly, which is the girls lacrosse coach, was named Shoreline Coach of the Year. And Coach Delizio, the coach for softball, was named Class M Coach of the Year. And additionally, the boys golf team came in seventh out of twentieth at the state competition.
And lastly, I think most importantly, the senior class reflection and breakfast is scheduled for the morning of June 15th with the graduation ceremonies taking place later that evening.
Yay, congratulations guys.
Thank you.
Sure.
You haven't graduated yet.
Almost, almost.
Approval of previous minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 17th, 2018 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
Second. Discussion? No discussion for the group? All in favor?
Aye.
Personnel?
I have received a resignation from Brett Gagliardi, a one-year phys ed teacher at North Branford Intermediate School effective May 22nd, 2018. I'll just put a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Mr. Brett Gagliardi, one-year-only physical education teacher at North Branford Intermediate School effective May 22nd, 2018.
Second. Any discussion, Bill? All in favor?
Aye.
The second resignation I have from Mr. Thomas Hart, a North Branford Intermediate School custodian with 19 years of service. This is for your information only, you do not need to take action on that. I wanted to thank Tom for his dedication to the district over his 19 years. He is going to have a career shift and change and he's becoming an EMT fireman in the neighboring community, so we wish him well.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Appointments?
None at this time, I was waiting for my superintendent's part, but there were no appointments, leave Mr. Wannicki has.
There actually are two leave requests, but we can do those, we have to do those in executive session.
Sure.
Okay. That will segue right into my report. District retirees, as you know, this evening we have a special ceremony. I want to thank Michael Auger, I don't think Michael is here right now. Michael, please thank. As always, the food was exceptional. We're honored this evening to recognize six dedicated employees who have done an amazing job servicing all of our students over very long and illustrious careers working with our children. So we are indebted to them for their hard work. I would like at this time to offer a proclamation and have them come forward with their spouses or children. They will do a photo. If I could please ask the presenters who read the biographies to come up as well, will take one picture. And then the retirees, if you do not mind walking in chicken hands to our board members as well. It's like a four-part request. So at this time, it is my pleasure and honor to recognize, read the last motion, please. Appreciation and proclamation, I'm only going to read the first part of the proclamation. During your 46 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools has built a reputation as being caring, honest, dedicated, and compassionate. We're thanking for your incredible dedication to all of us, our loved little professionals and finding a way to work at your department menu here this evening is another testament to the respect that you earn. Your beautiful family is here as well, I know they're very proud of you. We're thankful for giving it to us for these years. So that being said. Can I stand next to Marie?
One, two, three, one more. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Enjoy, have fun, thank you. Congratulations.
And this reads, "During your 27 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools has built a reputation as caring, honest, dedicated, compassionate for you." Linda, thank you so much. I have to probably say this, but the music team is incredibly strong and connected because of your leadership. There hasn't been an event that I've been to that you had not been present at. And before I could even get home, the email is out congratulating, recognizing, and talking about how proud you were of the performance or the act. And it starts with you, and you've been so blessed to have you over the last 27 years. I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Is this?
Your final.
Close up?
I'll stand.
Okay, one, two, three, and one. Thank you.
Watch the chords, watch the chords.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We don't.
During your 20 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools has built a reputation as caring, honest, dedicated, and compassionate for you. Again, loving the food the way that I do. Fortunate to taste many of your creations and be around where you are always there in crunch or in feeding the staff and preparing the students or in our child development course, the bonds you've made with our children and how you've taken care of them and motivated them and cared for them. You're certainly going to be missed and we wish you nothing but the best in your plans for camping and traveling and hiking and doing all those things that you'd love to do.
Thank you very much. We treat you every day. Thank you.
Why is it tricky?
Thank you for being the best study hall teacher. Congratulations.
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 It's been a great career.
Which reads, "During your 29 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools has built a reputation as caring, honest, dedicated, and compassionate for you." Joanne, obviously in your role and the sensitivity and the ages of the students that you're working with, you've worked magic connecting with our kids over time. I've had the opportunity to work with you over nine years and see it firsthand, and you are truly going to be the best, those are the big shoes to fill. And we wish you nothing but the best. I think you've treated me a couple of times. My eye. That's between us. Good health, enjoy your retirement, and thank you for sharing mom who is with us for so many years.
Thank you so much. Thank you for every day.
Joy that motion, I can't wait to hear it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Oh, I will.
Joan, please come forward, Joan. Family.
Thank you.
"During your 17 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools has built a reputation as caring, honest, dedicated, and compassionate for you." Listening to all of the great things that the staff has said about you, and we've witnessed it many times, and very many times, unfortunately, recent, very recent times, and we have been amazing, a pillar of strength, regain strength from you, and we're better people because of you. And we thank you for the dedication to our children, and we wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. You deserve to sit home and bake. And listen, sense the things that the central office. What you enjoy.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The numbers were moving before, but they're not now. Not from shower. Want me to try to cross record again?
Red light is on.
More than numbers on. Just make sure it's on the right. Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Enjoy, Joan.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll push it through again?
Congratulations, Joan.
Yeah, it's going. Okay, the screen must just blackout. Seventeen minutes and twenty-two seconds. Okay, okay, let's go.
Based on her 17 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools has built a reputation as caring, honest, dedicated, and compassionate for you. Congratulations, Yale.
I will make sure I can.
Our appreciation. Anyone special?
Well, okay, all right. Congratulations. I will let Yale know. Huh, is her surgery today?
We're now live on YouTube, so we're videoing all change. Okay. Retirees, I'm going to dismiss you right after this next, actually, after this next one, because many of you know are two student representatives to the board. And Sarah Muscola, who, I'm not going to read all of their bios, I'll just speak to them. And Michael, until at least two have been incredible ambassadors to our school system. I think they truly represent what it means to be a teacher, to truly immerse themselves in the school community, to be involved with sports and clubs and leadership goals. And obviously, they're National Honor Society members, they're outstanding students going to outstanding schools, but more importantly, they're just great people, they're amazing young people, and we're going to miss you. So that being said, if you please come forward, a small token of appreciation. If you want, just push it right over here.
I'm short now.
Mr. Woods.
I'll please step back.
No one wants me, I'm going to say right.
One, two, three. Okay.
I'm going to have to announce what they're doing next year, starting with Sarah.
Hi, I'm going to be attending St. Hart University next year, majoring in nursing.
Oh, nice.
And I will be going to Boston College and majoring in linguistics.
I can't say that you've been two of our best student representatives, so I will not say that on film what I'm saying. Two of my way, maybe way.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you so much.
See you on Friday.
Congratulations. Good luck, honey, good luck. Good luck.
See you Friday.
I know. Bye, guys, see you Friday. Are you going to dismiss your retirees?
Okay. Make a motion and dismiss the retirees. Retirees and their families, staff members, thank you for being here, thank you for your support of our retiring, what makes the world of seeing you all here today. And we look forward to seeing all of our retirees around town in the future. Please come back and visit us, nothing but the best in health and happiness, long years of enjoying the wonderful family. Thanks so much.
Mary, Mary, it just confused me because the screen blocked, like it's black, it's not, it's showing the numbers moving, so I just got nervous that maybe, but it seemed when I pressed it again. Yeah, it's a nice little reception.
Okay, I think we're back. Moving along to page three, our class of the 18th representatives, they will play a major role in our graduation exercises on Friday evening. Obviously, you are all invited, certainly some of you will be speaking, but you will sit and gather together and enjoy this wonderful celebration for all of your accomplishments and hard work. That being said, it's always an honor and pleasure to recognize our top three students in the class. They work extremely hard, they are involved in activities, events, leadership roles. If you read their bios and have the time to read their bios, it's pretty incredible that they're able to do as much as they do and maintain their grade point averages to rank one, two, and three. So that being said, our valedictorian, Zelena Voldenzi, National Honor Society, you can read her bio, very involved with our AP program, did extremely well, played on our state championship field hockey team, volunteered in the churches, she's on the all-academic field hockey team and will be attending Wesleyan University. So congratulations to Zelena. Salutatory, Christopher Candelora, again, you know, when you look at the bios of our three, National Honor Society, involved in numerous AP courses, really took advantage of our most rigorous courses. I know he just recently did extremely well on his engineering test through Project Lead the Way, and that's probably not on here, it was recently released and the teacher happened to come to me and share how proud he was and how wonderful was that Christopher in his class. Looking at, you know, Christopher to me, you know, about being the Eagle Scout and the amount of time that that takes to achieve at that level and still be a black belt in martial arts and what that encompasses as well, speaks to the dedication and the commitment that these kids have. So our salutary, Christopher Candelora, congratulations. Christopher will be attending Dartmouth College this fall, so congratulations to Christopher. Our essayist is Abigail Esposito, very successful as well, six advanced placement courses under her belt, many for college credit. She's an accomplished musician, then a member of the wind ensemble, the orchestra for the drama club. She volunteers at the corn festival, the big kid, and local churches and Reed Cross America Days. She's the captain of the high school bowling team, is a member of the environmental club. So congratulations to Abigail, she will be attending Lafayette College this fall. There are no donations at this time, obviously with two days left, there are no.
Okay, question about that?
Yes.
Because at, I think it was the May 16th meeting, we were talking about the TBS students going to Norwalk because of the no electricity in the school?
Yes.
And I don't remember what the cost was, but you had said that someone was making a donation to cover it, and so I'm wondering why we don't.
July meeting.
July meeting?
July meeting. There's one for $2,000 and one for $16.95, so it will be in the July, can we get approval on that?
Okay.
Those two. We're still waiting on one from the PTA for the busing cost, once we get that. Hopefully we get it before July, we'll do all three.
Okay.
Okay? Field trips, obviously there are no field trips at this time, two days left, and hopefully there's no storms that whip up and we need to take a field trip. Communications, I assume you've had a chance to look at exhibit B, I'm not going to go through and read all of the things that are happening. Obviously, this time of the year is chaotic, I think that's probably the safest way to describe all of your lives, if you've got children in school and you're on the wheel, running them here and there and everything that's happening. So I will not go into detail on that. What I will do is ask you to turn to exhibit C, and this was a letter for Robert Ford, our English teacher, our department head of the high school, who teaches our UConn Early College Experience Course, you have to be certified to teach that, that is a college-level course which can earn you UConn credit, okay? So the assessment is the same, and it's American Studies Class Number 1201, it's the same UConn class that they offer at the university. So if you go to exhibit C, there's a description of his observation by Lori Wolfley, who was in the professor at UConn, but I think more importantly, on the second back page, there are suggestions for professional development. This course is wonderful as it is, if you go down to the bottom there, I recommend that Mr. Ford pursue presenting his gamification projects both at national or international American Studies conferences and at UConn. Summary, the class was comparable to one I might observe on the UConn campus. In fact, Mr. Ford's unique creative approach to the material consistently makes his course one of the best I've seen, I always look forward to visiting.
That's fantastic.
So kudos to Mr. Ford for bringing these courses that are UConn-approved for UConn credit to our. So kudos to Mr. Ford for bringing these courses that are UConn-approved for UConn credit to our students at the high school. Post-high school plans, again, we kind of spoke about that the other night, and I've shared how studious this group was, with the percentages going on. Two, two or four-year colleges were thrilled to announce that ninety-four percent of our students continue their education after high school. The majority of the students, thirteen and twenty-one, in the top fifteen percent of the class will be attending private four-year schools, and five students in the top fifteen percent will attend the University of Connecticut, and three will attend public out-of-state universities. You know, we've shared about some of the acceptances of where our top three were going and very, very competitive schools. We did have four students accepted at Boston College from the top ten in our class.
Wow.
And having done this for now twenty-five years, to have four students from a smaller public school for accepted into Boston College from the top ten is phenomenal. So we're real proud with this data, we do have one female student going into the armed forces, she's joining the Marines, and I think she's gonna ship out in September. The other students are going into the workforce, and we wish them all nothing but the best. It's been, it's been a pleasure to watch them over the last four years and just grow into great, great individuals. The food service, healthy food, I do not believe we have to do anything with that because we voted on that the other night. I do wanna thank, I know Mr. Owork is here and recognize, he's around the corner, but recognize him for sharing that information and educating us on advantages and disadvantages of that program. So it certainly was helpful, thank you, Michael. Certified evaluations per Section 10 151D in Connecticut, term of statutes, the superintendent should report the status of teacher evaluations to the local Board of Education. And I will certify that this includes a year-end conference and review of all supportive material relating to the goals and mutual expectations that are established. All the administrators are completing or in the process of completing over the next, we have until the thirtieth, observations, write-ups, and entries to complete that process. So it's, it's quite a bit of work, and I commend them for their efforts, and they've been very serious with the evaluation. One of the most important things that you do is make sure that our teachers are the best and brightest and on task with what they're charged with, so thank you. The next part is evaluation of executive session. Page five of seven, the principal search, we had a committee today, I wanna thank Ms. Sienna for being a part of that committee. We've gathered this morning, and we're here until early afternoon. We interviewed six candidates, and we will interview five more candidates tomorrow. We have two teachers, three, three central office staff members, a board member, and a parent on the committee. And I shared with each of the candidates that we are on a tight timeline, looking to conclude and do second rounds in the very near future, and coming forward with a candidate in July for a July meeting, that's, that's our goal right now. Okay? And the authority to hire, each year the board acts on a motion that if there is a resignation or if there's something comes up and we have to hire someone, I have the authority to hire and get into, if we wait till the school year starts again, we could lose a candidate or the district can hold that employee for up to thirty days, which obviously is something that would then be a problem as well. So that being said, it'd be a motion to hire a certified teaching person.
Before motion, I have a question.
If the need should exist.
Just to go back into principal search, then we need two principals last month.
We have, excuse me, we have two interim positions right now, and the board directed me to start with the elementary position first and complete the process, and then move on to the next process.
All right, so all we're looking for right now is just Jerome Harrison.
Just Jerome for right now, that's correct.
And I guess I want an opinion from you, is that okay, or we would be losing a good candidate if we waited later on.
Well, Jerome will be finished with tomorrow, and then we'll go to a second round, and we should have that process behind us next week. And then in direction of the board, we'll look to get into the other process probably in July.
Okay.
Probably in July, about the same time as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Then I'll make a motion to approve that authority be granted to the superintendent to hire certified teaching personnel effective immediately until the September 20th, 2018, Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Discussion.
We have meetings over the summer, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Little poll vote. Chairman Pappa Holster?
No.
Vice Chair Nafria?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
No.
Janet Bosama?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
No.
Vincent Mays?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
No.
Okay. Understanding that if we do have a position for a certified staff member, it could create...
We could call a special meeting, or we can move it to the next month.
However, calling for a special meeting, this is to some of the people around vacation, may not be available for a special meeting, and that would be unfair advantage to those of us who would want to participate.
What is your reasoning for voting no? This has been...
For the good of the board.
Can you elaborate on that? I don't understand what the good of the board is.
Yes, we voted in policy earlier this year that either the superintendent or the board chair should basically not make a decision without the full vote of the board. So I think we should stand by that to keep us all out of trouble, because...
That policy wasn't for the superintendent to not make a decision, that's what he's here for, that's what he's hired for.
It's a majority development and majority rules.
Okay.
I'm just asking why.
Yeah, yeah, I have a reason, good of the board.
Well, I don't appreciate the good of the board because then you're saying it's good for me, that's not good for me. Maybe good for you, but it's not good for me.
It's a policy that states good of the board, it's called good of the board, I wasn't being condescending.
Well, then, it's a policy, but it's certainly not good for me, and I don't think it's good for the school system either, that's my thing.
Committee reports? Oops, sorry.
No, just the budget. We had a meeting on Monday, and, excuse me, Mr. Medicki will update you timeline-wise and scenarios for moving forward with the budget. Obviously, we shared with you at that budget meeting, there were some concerns about insurance and the possibilities of having to have meetings and get together with bargaining units to do that. So he can update you with...
Well, that will do an executive session. Yeah, so I mean, frankly, I guess I'm not quite sure what to do with the budget, per se. I, I, you know, I mean, we, we talked about it on Monday, and I'm not, I, I'm not sure where to go from there.
So we'll move it to executive session, so you could talk about...
Well, we can't talk about the budget.
No, but they...
We certainly talk about the...
That piece, and then we can maybe move the budget conversation out once we have the details that you have.
Okay.
Does that work for everyone?
So we need a motion to...
Well, the executive session motion.
So what's holding you up, Don?
Excuse me?
What's holding you up?
Well, we, as I said, you know, at this point in time, I mean, you know, I don't make the budget. And I'm prepared to report an executive session about, on those things that impact the healthcare potential issue that we had. I don't have any, I don't have any new information on anything else.
So do we have to really wait on any further conversation until I have additional information on which way?
I mean, we could approve a budget, can we not approve a budget pending the outcome of the health insurance, I mean, that it may need to be changed pending that? I mean, which is the better way to do it?
I guess there's, there's two issues. One is the, if you forget about the healthcare issue, there did not seem to be consensus regarding what was on the sheet that we talked about Monday night.
Right.
So that's the piece that, you know, I don't have an answer for. I do have a potential in terms of approving something and holding the healthcare issue in abeyance, but that's, that doesn't deal with the rest of the issue.
What's the suggestion of moving forward, Don, since Robert told you to this piece, so you're gonna have to help guide me?
The, I mean, as I said, I think that the issue is twofold. First, we need to resolve how we get to the 31647175 that we talked about Monday night. And once we do that, then we can, I think I have a way to basically defer the healthcare issue, so we can vote on it, but still protect what you were concerned about the other night, and I certainly understand that. So I mean, and, I mean, I'll just read it. So if, I said to approve the operating budget in the amount of 31647175, but I said as submitted, and as I said, quite frankly, I'm not sure what that is at this point in time. "Contingent upon a temporary $350,000 reduction to be allocated by future budgetary line item transfers is required." So you're approving the total, but we're setting aside what could be the issue with healthcare. And once that gets resolved, we either don't need to do anything, or we need to move that money from other line items.
But, Don, if we're approving, if the motion is to approve the budget as a total, there's no voting on the line items that are costing the show.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, that's the problem.
So how do we approve portions of the budget without other portions of the budget, so that we can at least make some headway?
Well, I mean, I guess you could go a line at a time if, you know, if that's what you wanna do.
How many lines are there? I mean, how, how like...
Well, I didn't...
Do you think you've given us several breakdowns?
No, I mean, I guess this...
So I don't know what...
The breakdown from Monday is the one that I'm talking about.
This one?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question before we move on?
Sure.
In our discussion tonight, we have a retiring secretary and a resigned custodian. Are we filling those positions?
We don't have a retiring secretary.
She retired months ago.
She, she, that position has been filled, yeah. That position is filled and filled.
And how about the custodian?
Custodian position has not yet been filled.
Are we planning to fill us?
Well, that's, according to what you have here, yes.
How many custodians are at the intermediate school? Is that that three point seven?
There are seven between the high school and the middle school. And that includes the auditorium.
So one split auditorium.
Yeah, so I mean, if you kind of look at it, think of it as a complex, there's seven in those buildings. There's two at Totucket Valley, there's a half here, and there's two and a half at Jerome Harrison.
So to break it down during the day, there's one at the high school, there's one at the middle school during the day. In the afternoon, two more come into each building. And then there's the, the split auditorium person who does these auditorium first, second, third, and comes over and helps with the high school.
And that's also an evening position.
I don't honestly know what to say, because I made my vote clear last minute. If you wanna make a motion to move it forward, and I'm only one of seven. We certainly can, because I think that's the fairest thing to do. Marcy, you've been in this process before, do you agree with me on that?
I do, well, we have, we have to get to some point, we have to make some headway, we have to do something. I will let you know, I reached out to Kate, and I will read to you. Could you just give me a second?
Is there a replacement while you're looking for that, is there a replacement for the phys ed teacher at the intermediate school?
Hasn't been hired yet.
I haven't hired yet.
Okay.
There will be...
We haven't hired, we, we haven't replaced anyone yet.
Okay.
But again, with what we talked about on Monday, that position would be replaced.
Right.
Right, you need two PE people there.
Just so that you know, I reached out and I said, "I am the vice chair of the North Branford Board of Education. I was an attendant at the workshop you provided to us about a month or so ago. I have a question that I was hoping you could provide some guidance on. We are trying to finalize our budget. Members of the VOA are not satisfied with test scores at one of our schools. The district's administrative team has a plan in place to improve the situation. Is it our role as a board member to manage the budget by voting down their plan and insisting that the district lay off other staff, clerical, custodial, staff in order to hire additional coaches? Or is that not our role, and better if we set a goal to improve scores and let them decide how best to do that?" I got an immediate response. "Boards certainly have the authority to do the former, but I think it could be contrary to the reason boards and schools exist. There may be things I don't know, but boards that aspire to really leading their districts would set the goal and ask the administration for a plan." He's basically saying, you can instruct them to go from point A to point B, but it is not our job to tell them how to get there. That's...
I agree with that, but I still don't agree, I don't agree, I agree with that we shouldn't tell them how to do it. I, my biggest issue, and I'll be honest, is that we are eliminating so many educators, yet we're all full in on rehiring a custodian, where I think that it wouldn't be laying off anybody, because the position is always, is already open, as are these positions that are, are not being backfilled as well. So I, I don't understand why we would, when we have such issues at a school. And again, Mr. Owork, you are new to this school, so when I say these things, I'm not directing it as a failure to you, because I don't believe that. I just wanna find a way to give you all the resources you need. So I'm really struggling with how do we eliminate all these educators and not find a way if there's an opening?
Now, can I, just for clarification, when you say eliminate all these educators, we have a language position because of numbers that are...
But you could use that money elsewhere, you don't have to hire another language person, it's still on the teacher's line. So you can use it at somewhere else, I, I don't know where you'd wanna use it. That, as Marcy said, it's not my job to say where you would use it, but I don't understand why you would be so quick to hire a custodian and not to replace one of the retiring teachers in another place.
Well, just being fiscally responsible, as our enrollment, like at the middle school, a sixth-grade teacher resigned their position, enrollment was down, we were able to capture because of enrollment and not replace that, and fill it internally by recreating and redesigning. It's the same thing with, our Latin numbers are very low, and the French numbers are very, very low. So we can cover it without replacing a teacher, allowing us to then do the sections over at the middle school. So it's creative in how we did it. We built a budget based upon input from all of our buildings, all of our administrators, and looking at our needs. We've looked at the, you brought up the administrative assistance before, and, and, you know, we, we gave, you know, a data sheet, and there's more specific information, if you'd like that, I might pass that around, just by district and, and the employees that they have. We've had, we've had studies done in the past on our custodial numbers based upon square footage and the expectations. And looking at a Stetson review that was done a few years ago, it, it was a situation where we were understaffed then. We did remove one of the custodial positions two years ago. We did remove one of the custodial positions in, two years ago, as part of the budget, for budgetary reasons. We did reduce two secretarial staff, twelve-month positions, down to ten-month positions a year ago. So, we have, we have taken action because of downsizing.
But then you say that our district is, that, you know, is one of the few districts that spends the least amount per pupil, yet you're still not putting the money back into the, the students, you're taking away the teaching staff.
Well, we are, we're adding.
It's like you're talking out of both sides of your mouth.
We're adding Spanish. No, we're adding.
It doesn't make sense to me, and I'm trying.
We were directed that we wanted to add offerings at the middle school, we're offering a full year of Spanish. We wanted to offer an additional course at the high school, we're adding the communications, we're bringing the coaching model up to the sixth grade. So, we, we're doing what the charge was to do. If, if you're, I guess the direction that we're looking for is, if you have something that you feel that you wanna eliminate, we need that direction. We've come together, we've looked at it, we've evaluated, we've asked the staff for their input, and provided the job descriptions. That's, it doesn't sound like that's convincing you or the board, so I'm asking you, where would you like us to, where would you like us to deplete our staff?
Can I just, can I just say one thing? Custodians, as much as, you know, teachers, teachers, custodians are support staff. The teachers need custodians, I mean, you have classrooms that need to be cleaned, baskets to be empty. It might not sound like sexy, but it's necessary. I can't tell you how many times my mother came home and she had to clean her own classroom, she lived in the inner city, and she didn't have custodians. So, that was like another level of her job that she didn't need. So, as much as custodians don't seem like they're like a big deal, they do, they are support staff, they're needed.
And, and I think a big problem here, and it's, it's not faulting anybody, we've had such a changeover in board members in the last year. And although the newer members might not like the way something is being done, or the goals that were set, they were set last year, we can't go back on those. They were set last year, if you don't, you know, Mr. Schoolmaker was charged with building cleanliness, um, the previous year, for, um...
Tools for schools.
Yeah, with the tools, that, that was part of, part of it, was tools for schools, which he instituted for this year. And it might not be something that was important to you, or is important to you, and if you wanna change it going forward, then that's what we do, but we can't change something that was set last year and fault somebody for it and take it away. You know what I'm trying to say? There's been such a changeover in, in board members that it's made it very, very difficult.
Is there a particular area that you'd like to decrease?
I'm just having a, I'm struggling, I mean, I don't want anyone to lose their job. I, I don't like the idea of that, but when I see an opening for a custodial staff, and we're not replacing any teachers, it kind of just strikes me funny.
If, the reason that we weren't replacing the teacher wasn't because of enrollment, I'm running, we have, we have a responsibility as a board too, that as we continue to decline in our enrollment, are we gonna continue to run classes with enroll language six students?
Well, are we gonna, gonna continue to say that we are the lowest district as per pupil cost per head? I mean, if we don't use that argument ever, I think you're fine.
Well...
Won't be next year.
That's okay, I'm, I'm saying that, with that responsibility, if enrollment continues to go down, and class sizes are six or eight students, that doesn't make much sense.
I'm just one vote, you do not have to convince me.
No, but I, my, my point is...
I'm just, you are directing the conversation, so you are the...
I'm trying to back out, I've said my, I've said my piece.
No, but we built a budget, and we're saying that we put this budget together with a great deal of consideration, knowing our buildings, knowing our staff, knowing what the needs are, and I'm hearing that you're not satisfied. If you want to tell us where, if you want to tell us where we should cut, you have that prerogative to do that.
I do not have that prerogative.
We can't tell you, we can't tell you where to cut. You came up with a budget, and I don't think it was anything different than what you proposed last time, I believe Sean asked you to be creative.
We, this is creative, this is a creative budget, this is a very creative budget, and you look at, we're not, we have people that were retiring, we have numbers that are low in those areas, we were able to creatively position those language teachers to be able to pick up and offer a full year of Spanish. That's creative. That's not laying a teacher off, a teacher retired this evening, a teacher left and resigned at N B I S, and we were able to move those classes, we were able to shift a language teacher to seventh and eighth grade to have fifteen in a class for those seventh and eighth graders, that's creative. I'm not letting the teachers go. That, that needs to be crystal clear, there are no teachers being laid off.
Yeah, I understand.
You had, you had retirements tonight, you've charged me with adding things for the district, and we brought Spanish, you're gonna get Spanish, you're gonna get a section of communications next year at the high school that's gonna have fifteen students in that, we're gonna move the coaches up to sixth grade and do that. We've done that using this sheet to get to our number. That's communication, that's teamwork, that's everything that we've done. If you're not satisfied with that, you need to tell me, Mr. Schoolmaker, I wanna get rid of A, A, B, or C, and, and then we'll have clarification.
Mr. Schoolmaker, I'm in a big internal struggle, because I know you were set with a set of goals, and I had nothing to do with them, and I, I know it's like a ladder, I understand that, one year builds upon the next. I'm struggling, and I am one person, so I may not agree, but as I said to Marcy, the majority rules. I don't need to agree, 'cause if the rest of the board does, I'm certainly not gonna cause conflict. I want the best thing for this district and the students, and I may be the loudest voice, but my voice might not always be right.
And that being said, we're, we came to, on Monday night, and we came again with the reductions and what we needed to do to get to our number. Now, obviously, if the insurance doesn't work out, that's gonna be a whole nother drill with having to find three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and you will see many cuts in the areas that you are talking to. But until we have that decision on that insurance, this is what we came up with, that is creative, that doesn't lay teachers off, that gives the district the opportunity to do the things that the board wanted to do moving forward.
And will the administrators support this?
We're not putting, the administrators built the, built the budget.
You guys supported this.
I, just from the labor end of it, if you have seven custodians and you lose one, that means the other six have to pick up, that'll look the slack, then you have to pay overtime?
Well, it, it's, things don't get done. I mean, you're, you're, you're in a balancing act.
Yeah.
If, if you run your same hours and you don't have that person, things don't get done. And, you know, we, we did, as part of our strategic plan, to facilitate, that's something that was very important to the board, about school cleanliness. That's a reason why it's up here, and that's a reason why we implemented tools for schools, and we got it fully implemented and up and running. We're going backwards if we're not giving our custodial crew the manpower they need to keep our buildings clean.
Okay, I'm moving this forward, we've spent enough time.
But I don't, still don't understand if, if we don't know about the three-hundred thousand...
Well, we're gonna prove this pending that, and then when we go into executive session, we're...
If we lose the three, we have to come back, and we have to go at different exercises.
Right, so I'm, Don, can you help me out here? Hand me that paper, please, there's something.
Well, there's a, I mean, there's a couple things, I guess...
No, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this.
Right, which, this then is effectively a companion to that, because this is what line items have to be reduced, and there's actually one increase for unemployment.
Okay. Thank you.
There's that, there's that, and there's actually a second motion on that sheet to establish a...
The one percent fund?
Yes.
Okay. So, maybe I should start with that one?
It's probably easier.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the establishment of a one percent operating reserve from the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen operating budget in accordance with section ten dash two four eight A of the Connecticut General Statutes as authorized by the town council on April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
So, I do.
Discussion? Will call vote. Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice chairman, Afrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bosomo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Okay, so when I read this next one, do you want me to give the breakdown of the line items in it?
Well, that's, that's what you would have to do to approve that.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the operating budget in the amount of thirty-one million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, as submitted, contingent upon a temporary three hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction to be allocated by future budgetary line item transfers as required. By reducing object one eleven certified salaries by four thousand, eight hundred, no, four hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, reducing object two eleven FICA and Medicare by one thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars, increasing object two twelve unemployment by fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars, reducing object two thirteen health insurance by forty-seven thousand, fifty-four dollars, reducing object five ten transportation by fifty-one thousand dollars, and reducing object six eleven instructional supplies by forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars for a total reduction of five hundred, forty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second.
Discussion?
It's not like a conference, is it? 'Cause I'm starting out.
Is it what Don just handed out? You're not in it yet?
No.
Here's the conference.
Will call vote. Teddy? Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice chairman, Afrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
No.
Janet Bosomo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
No.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
No.
So, then where do we go from here for a budget? This has to be set.
I'll, I'll wait for direction from you on what you'd like us to reduce.
Well, we, we need direction now, we postponed this from last month, we had a special meeting Monday night for it, decisions need to be made.
Marson? She's the chairperson, she's voting no, let her figure it out. We, this is the best, it was a great, great motion, they don't wanna, not more, let them figure it out. Let them figure it out, we didn't have any choice. There's no budget in place, you can't spend any money, let them figure it out.
Okay, that concludes, that concludes my report.
Committee reports.
Well, that we need to move into executive session. I just sent, on the list. For budget and operations, I know we are always loathe to make additions to the agenda, but we, these bids just opened this week. And so, this is just a request for authorization to award the asbestos bids.
Did they go up to three bids, or it just goes through?
No, this was a bid, so, I mean, it was a formal bid, it was open, sealed bid. Um, we have six bidders, I believe.
Oh. Is this the same company we normally use?
We've not used them before, and that's one of the reasons we're just requesting authorization, because there are a few things we haven't done yet, like checking references. I, I can't imagine Cherry Hill's not gonna be okay.
We've used probably three different companies the last three years, we've never used Cherry Hill for this capacity, but they are local vendors.
And they're fairly large companies.
So, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda of the June thirteenth, twenty-eighteen Board of Education meeting under section X, committee reports, age building committee to include discussion and possible action regarding R F P oh-two dash twenty-eighteen asbestos abatement at North River High School, and R F P oh-three dash twenty-eighteen asbestos abatement at Totucket Valley Elementary School slash Stanley T W Community Center.
Can I have a second?
Discussion?
Who's second with that?
That's that.
This is just to discuss.
On favor?
Aye.
Building committee, so we need to make a motion for the bar.
So, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the award of contract R F P oh-two dash twenty-eighteen to Cherry Hill Construction, lower bid in the amount of fourteen thousand, sixty-four dollars and fifty cents for asbestos abatement at North River High School.
Second. Discussion?
My understanding that you didn't have a low bid, but you didn't really check on references, or the quality of the work, or things like that?
Because the bid just opened, so...
Was it the only bid?
No, no, there were six bidders, but this is the low bidder, and as I said, I mean, I think it's unlikely that their references aren't gonna be acceptable, but we would confirm that before we actually moved ahead and gave them the award.
So, what you're asking us basically is to vote to move ahead with checking their references, and if they're fine, then we'll move ahead with the work, if they're not, you will not.
Correct, correct.
Then that motion's out of order.
Right, or it should say pending references.
Okay.
Don, what's the date scheduled for the abatement?
Well, the high school would probably be done in July, and Stanley T has to be done in August, or Totucket and Stanley T. So, we just wanna say pending reference checks?
Are you, what's, what's the time schedule?
Typically, we would do the high school in July, and the, um, Totucket Valley, we need to do after summer camp is over.
So, if the references come back where they're not good, how long does it take to go through the bidding process again?
Well, we wouldn't necessarily go through the bidding process again, we'd go to the next lowest bidder.
All right, and so the next lowest bidder, you would have to check their references. So, does that mean it has to come back to us again for...
That would have to come back to you.
And it's gotta be unavailability, meaning if, if this one doesn't come back, then the second one is not available, you go to your third.
So, when the...
Well, we might not go that, because, I mean, they were a fair amount cheaper than the other bidders, so we might decide at that point to abandon the project.
So, why do we have to check their references before we move forward? Why didn't your references come in with the bids?
Well, they supplied references, we haven't verified them yet.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, there were no errors, I mean, there were no omissions from the bid documents. They did what they were supposed to do, we haven't had a chance to get to their references yet.
This is floor tile?
And you do a portion of this every year, right?
So, we do a classroom or two each year, it's about seven thousand dollars per classroom. The biggest part is the setup and the air quality while they're doing it. The simplistic part is scraping the tiles up and getting the mask off the floor. It's pretty straightforward.
I just think it's a prisoner's dilemma right now, because no matter how the motion reads, even if their references don't come in, you can't go to the next bidder until you come back to us anyways.
That's true.
So, we're in a circle of...
So, should we change the motion to go to the lowest bidder, and, and if the, if they don't check out?
Well, I think you go to the lowest bidder no matter what, and that's, once you pass the motion that, the lowest bidder gets it, that's it, that's it. If you make a condition subsequent, well, that's something different, which is trying to do, is make a condition subsequent, I understand that, but if that's, condition subsequent fails, they have to come back to us with the next lower bid.
Right, right.
And that, that may not be till the next meeting, when's the next meeting, in July?
July nineteenth.
So, that, that may be your, your dilemma, and they can't move forward, if the references fail, he can't move forward.
Why didn't they submit, is it not normal for them to submit?
They did, no, they submit. They submit. They're a very large company, very reputable construction company.
Yeah, they're wonderful.
So you're okay with this, Vince, or you want the motion changed?
No, she can make the motion pending the reference check.
I'm making a motion to draw that motion.
I do, I do.
We're not, I don't think you have to make a motion, you just withdraw it.
No, you make the motion to approve Cherry Hill.
Right, right, right. They have to withdraw their, please, motion.
I don't know a motion to withdraw, do you?
No, no.
Right, you just, we're just withdrawing your motion. I would withdraw your second.
The I said the motion was out of order anyway.
Right.
She just stays, the motion's out of order, she goes to a new motion.
Okay, so I will make a motion to authorize the award of contract RFP zero-two dash twenty eighteen to Cherry Hill Construction, low bidder in the amount of fourteen thousand sixty-four dollars and fifty cents for asbestos abatement at North Grandford High School, pending references.
Well, then, what do they have to do?
I would say pending satisfactory reference checks.
Pending satisfactory reference checks.
Pending satisfactory reference checks.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, vote there. Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janne Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
And then the second one would need to be modified in the same way.
I'd like to make a motion to author, authorize the award of contract RFP oh-three twenty eighteen to Cherry Hill Construction, low bidder in the amount of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for asbestos abatement at Totucket Valley Elementary School and Stanley T William Community Center.
Second. Discussion? Roll call vote. Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janne Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
And then the second one would need to be modified in the same way.
I'd like to make a motion to author, authorize the award of contract RFP zero-two dash twenty eighteen to Cherry Hill Construction, low bidder in the amount of fourteen thousand sixty-four dollars and fifty cents for asbestos abatement at North Grandford High School, pending references.
Well, then, what do they have to do?
I would say pending satisfactory reference checks.
Pending satisfactory reference checks.
Pending satisfactory reference checks.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, vote there. Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janne Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
And then the second one would need to be modified in the same way.
I'd like to make a motion to author, authorize the award of contract RFP oh-three twenty eighteen to Cherry Hill Construction, low bidder in the amount of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for asbestos abatement at Totucket Valley Elementary School and Stanley T William Community Center, the Board of Education Lab, Lab Bathroom, pending satisfactory reference checks.
Second. Discussion? Roll call vote. Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Uh, yes.
Janne Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Curriculum? Give me.
Wait, 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 wait.
What, am I missing something?
Yes.
Yeah, both, um, budget and operations and curriculum have proposed calendars if you want to act on them.
Exhibit H and J.
These are the dates of the board meetings, so it follows the pattern that we've been doing. Curriculum meets at five, and, um, budget meets at six, with the exception of June, where the budget is a week prior to the board meeting, and the, um, curriculum is, and we don't, there, there isn't always a curriculum meeting in June, um, but it would be on the date of the board meeting, just at an earlier time to accommodate, uh, any retirement activities that may follow.
What's the tentative end of school or, like?
Next year?
Yeah.
Things of the heat? June?
It just seems like that's a crazy week to have meetings also, because you have the promotion, you have graduate.
No.
Right. Because we ended up getting on five or six this year.
We actually pushed seven days this year.
Yeah. Um, is there a curriculum meeting in July?
There's not normally, because there's sometimes people on vacation.
So this one says just, um, FYI, it says July eighteenth, twenty nineteen?
June seventh.
Says no meetings.
No, well, for next year, for the Board of Education.
No meetings.
Oh, says no meeting, God, it gets listed, sorry. Sorry, I didn't look at the time.
Congratulations, June seventh, Friday night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
I mean, if you want to pick a different date for that June, um, budget meeting, it, you know, it doesn't have to be the Thursday before, it could be a different day.
You can always change it.
And we can change it, yes.
So it's nice to have a set schedule, and if it's, if we have to amend it, we can do that.
We have a year.
We have, we have a year.
A lot can happen.
Time to figure out.
A lot can happen.
So do we have to make a motion to approve, please?
Don, do we need to make a motion to, yes?
Yeah, we should. I see that's hot in here, so.
Individually?
Yeah, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget operations subcommittee proposed meeting dates for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed meeting dates for the curriculum, instruction, and strategic planning subcommittee for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Penchant, there's no meeting. Policy?
Policy P twelve forty, uh, was presented last month, but there was some clarification about, um, vaccines and paying for vaccines, and if you read exhibit H, um, the attorney's suggestions, um, so having read those, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Would this be a second read together?
No, this, this, I think we put it in as a first read.
Oh, again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because of the clarifications.
Okay.
So what exhibit are we on?
Exhibit H and I.
The first read.
Immunizations, um, there's a question about paying for it, for those that could not afford it, and there are four factors that we've listed, um, there's four factors that, um, were given to us by the attorney, and then, um, an explanation letter. It's right after the curriculum dates.
No, I have it, I'm, I'm looking at it, and I'm trying to understand what you're reading from. So you asked for clarification from the attorney, I see a conditions clarification on June fifth.
Right.
He added in the stuff on the top.
It was brought once before, and we had some discussion, we needed clarification, Don went back, and, um, got exhibit H more of an explanation.
And that, that went down to where it says additional clarification, then it was discussed again at the subcommittee meeting, um, and so I went back and asked for additional guidance on that, and this is what was returned by the attorney.
So basically, if the parent refuses, it'll be parental neglect.
We call DCF.
We have to call DCF, or the, the teacher or the nurse would have to call DCF.
Well, there's limited exemptions, it says.
Right, there are some exemptions.
Right, so if it's not, if it's not part of this.
Right, religion.
Like you, you are able to be exempt from, like, you don't, you can't just call DCF if a child fits against their religion, let's say.
Right.
So, yeah, there's, there's.
Right.
So there's four.
Right, if you have medical issues, you can.
Yeah.
But again, that's a first read, so no action is required tonight.
Then we have, um, policy P twenty-four hundred, prevention, and report of child abuse. Again, this is, um, presented, we had putting in the appendix, um, rather than have two separate entries. Exhibit K supports that. Again, to, to read that first read. And then policy P twenty-five hundred, prevention, report of abuse of adults with intellectual disabilities, we have exhibit L to support that, and its language, um, and adding, uh, the appendix to that one also actually in the policy, instead of having the policy and then having that somewhere else to combine to write in the policy. And then policy P forty-ten, fundraising, uh, we have talked about this before, about, um, the crowdfunding, and, um, what the board of events' role would be if we had crowdfunding in this policy.
This is the policy as it stands, as it exists, and so it is actually silent on crowdfunding. Um, the couple of the options the attorneys gave us were you could add a section which would allow crowdfunding under certain circumstances, um, or you could add a section to prohibit crowdfunding. Um, the policy as it's written does neither. One of the questions that also came up is, and with regard to, um, the cost or the burden, um, and that was discussed at the policy committee meeting, and there is usually, it looks like about a three to five percent draw for either crowdfund or kickstart, or, you know, whatever organization you're dealing with. So there is some money going to the website, for lack of a better word.
And in the policy, it has all the listing of things that we, that they have to comply with for fundraising, um, and if we do crowdfund, if we, if it's not in here, but if you do decide you want to put it in, then all they say would apply. But it's presented without crowdfunding.
And as a first read.
It's first read. Uh, and then, okay, so we have, uh, the second read, policy P ten forty, free school accommodations. There's also exhibit N.
What letter's that?
N. Nancy, Nancy.
So this is a second read, um, and we are including the definitions in the policy, where they separate before, or we just have the policy, so we're trying to be more inclusive, to have all the information in one place. So this is a second read, so I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P ten forty, free school accommodations as submitted.
Second. Discussion? Vince, are you, you okay? I didn't know if you were still letting through the read.
No, no, not a lot, I'm looking for red marks, I don't see any red marks, so I'm good.
Okay, roll call vote. Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janne Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Policy P eleven twenty, student discipline suspension expulsion, due process, exhibit over the new, um, packet, listed again as a second read, uh, there was a language change to be most specific about walkouts.
Yeah, the bottom of page four of seven was the modification that was made in response to the question that was asked at the last board meeting.
Page forty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, page four of twenty-seven, right, and number nine down at the bottom, it simply says an unauthorized walkout or sit-in, um, to cover the, um, the situation that was discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah, so what, what constitutes an unauthorized walkout? I mean, the last time, after this incident before that, I mean, I understand that, so what if the students are passionate about some other constitutional right, and the administration says?
No.
No.
There's no difference between school without permission. Once you exit the building, you violate our policy, our handbook policy on, you know, where you're supposed to be for accountability during the time of seven-thirty to two-ten, you're given the consequence.
But doesn't that provoke another constitutional legal argument, possibly a lawsuit, because the administration said yes under the Second Amendment, but you're saying no under a different amendment? So you're taking away the students' rights or the parental rights to act with their, with their, with their children. Wouldn't that pose another conflict?
Well, we endorse it, and we're involved with it, and we supervise it, it would be okay.
I think the devil's out of here.
No, we'd be okay.
You're saying?
We supervise it, we organize it, we're a part of it, it's okay. If we don't, and the kid just say, we're leaving, and it's not sanctioned, it's not supported, it's not supervised by us, it's no different than the kid going to.
I know, but I'm just saying, you've already approved more, authorized more, okay, with this right now.
Should we just bring them all together?
And I'm just, and I'm just looking at, a lawsuit could follow if the students are passionate about something, and the administration says no, because you're not passionate about it, how could you argue, or how could you defend a lawsuit saying, what authority gives you the right to choose which amendment the students have the right to speak out about it? That's all.
But I, but I would think that if the students came, there'd be a dialogue with you.
Absolutely.
And, and Vince, I think this is more of just kids standing up and saying, this happened
here, and I'm, I'm upset about it, and come on, we're gonna walk out and protest, and they never approached the admins. That's the way I'm reading it.
Right, this was, this was a well thought-out, planned situation. The last one, the only, the only one would be that.
Just from the legal end of it, I'm looking at your fault.
No, I'm sure there's always a legal. That's why you, you know, your, your policy, you're not grounded.
Do we remove the whole walkout thing, then?
Yeah.
Do we remove it completely?
No, you can't, because they already exercised the right ones.
Okay, so it's now present.
Putting in something in place where if it's sanctioned by the administration, it's okay. I'm only saying that the administration says no, and they do it, and they get discipline for it, will their parents come in and say, wait?
It's like, we say you can't leave school early, and they do, and then they serve detention, and we deal with it.
It's a handbook, so they, they know about it, whether they choose to supervise or not, and they make these consequences.
Can I make a motion?
No.
Motion, nobody seconded it.
Okay. I second it.
Any more discussion? Roll call. Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janne Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Okay, um, last one. Um, policy P eleven forty, restraint and seclusion, uh, we had a exhibit P, um, I make a motion to approve policy P eleven forty, restraint and seclusion as submitted, and I don't know if we need Suzanne to, we do not use a seclusion plan, it's not in here, um, and I don't know if Suzanne needs to address any of these, because she's more knowledgeable[1670.12]
Absolutely, no different than the other.
I think this is more of just kids standing up and saying, "This happened here, and I'm, I'm upset about it, and come on, we're gonna walk out and protest", and they never approached the admins. That's what I'm reading.
This was a well-thought-out, planned situation. The last one, the only, the only one we got.
Just from the legal end of it, I'm looking at your fault.
No, I'm sure there's always a legal. That's why, you know, your, your policy, you're not grounded.
Do we remove the whole walkout thing then?
Yeah.
Do we remove it completely?
No, you can't, because they already exercised their rights once.
Okay, so it's now present.
Now you're putting in something in place where if it's sanctioned by the administration, it's okay. I'm only saying that the administration says no, and they do it, and they get disciplined for it, will their parents come in and say, "Wait, can't I?"
It's like, we say you can't leave school early, and they do, and then they serve detention, and we deal with it.
It's a handbook, so they, they know about it, whether they choose to supervise or not, and they make these consequences. Can I make a motion?
No.
Nobody seconded it.
I seconded it.
Any more discussion?
Well, Paul.
Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janne Bosama?
Yes.
Carolyn Kandor?
Yes.
Vincent Mays?
Yes.
Cynthia Wright?
Yes.
Okay, last one. Policy P 1140, restraint and exclusion. We had a exhibit P. I make the motion to approve policy P 1140, restraint and exclusion as submitted, and I don't know if Suzanne to, we do not use a exclusion plan. It's not in here. And I don't know if Suzanne needs to address any of this, because she's more knowledgeable about the name.
The only thing that I would say is that when the policy committee originally met and talked to me about this, this policy that you bring is consistent with our practices. A couple of days ago, I attended the legal roundtable. Our state legislature has redefined exclusion, restraint, and involuntary exclusion. And so the board may consider tableing this until the legislative language is finalized this summer, because it's supposed to go into place July 1st, and there will be some board changes, some policy changes that are required, so it's really your choice.
Thank you, because it's probably the future.
So we're gonna prove it now and then have to redo it, or just table it now?
This is information we didn't have, so if I withdraw my, I make the motion to table it, so we get more information.
I second it.
Paul Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that was all policies, and now Daces.
Got your.
So I did not go to the meeting this month, I apologize, but I did get an update on the winter read. They lost the building, handed to the building. So they'll be looking, they're applying to next year, but the longer they have to look for a new building, so I don't know how that will affect their budget, because they were only getting that building for $1 a month, I think it was. So obviously, it's gonna be a big difference.
Yeah.
Coming up, so. And I don't, we don't meet over the summer, as far as I understand.
Uh, there's no building. Committee, communications.
Email went out for a July 9th meeting at 6 o'clock prior to the council meeting. And all board members were invited to attend, involving school security and policy. Some of you have responded that you are unable to attend. I don't know if 100% have, so if you look back at that email, if you could please let me know if you will be attending.
Is it the 9th?
The 10th, I think it's the 10th.
10th. Yeah, okay, I got it.
So they were at council.
It's Tuesday, you put 10, right, okay.
Tuesday, 10. 6:05.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section, well, timeout, before we do that, we tend, why don't you skip around and do good of the board and visitors of press in case people do not wanna stick around?
Okay.
We usually do that.
Yeah, just in the booklet that was handed out, the packet, if we could make a motion or to remove the breakdown of the students' rankings and the schools they were accepted to or not accepted to.
Oh, you already have?
You did?
It doesn't go to the public.
It doesn't go to the public.
No, it doesn't.
But doesn't this go on to the.
Isn't FYI now, because it's in our packets, FOR?
FOR. There's, there's no names attached to it.
But we already know, I can tell you right now, we know who class 1, 2, and 3 are, because you have it in this packet.
So we've always done it like this. If you'd like me to give you a paper copy next year and not include it, I can do that.
But.
It wasn't in last year.
It wasn't in last year, as far as, as far as student rank. But you have, so with this one, you have.
I went back and I.
You've never done this.
I looked at the board packet.
It was laid out differently than this year.
But this actually has who student number one is, and where they were accepted and denied and waitlisted. You have student, but we already know who number one is, because it's in our packet, who's the valid, it affects mostly the first three.
If you, next year, want me just to give you the paper copy and not have them together, I can give you, or if you don't want that information, we've always done it. We've always had it.
You've never had it like this, though, and let me tell you.
The format, the format change.
But number two, number two, everybody knows who number two is, because it's in the packet, and it's saying every single college, he was accepted, denied, or waitlisted.
Okay, what I'm saying is.
And I think that's fantastic. He got into great schools.
I'm confused, though.
Is this on the website?
I don't know how it's a bad point.
It is not on the website.
Should anybody know where, where a child was denied or waitlisted? It's one thing to say where he was accepted, or she was accepted.
It's been in a different format than one page, so if you'd like me to, we've always done it, if you want me to take it out and give you a paper copy next year and hand it to you, I can do that.
I mean, honestly, I don't need to know where they applied or.
Well, some people, they'd like to know, because it helps with, you know, where they're applying, and then for all the danger tracking on where the kids are looking to go. Listen, we've done it this way for years, for years it's been done this way. If you want me to correct it, and you don't want that piece in, I'll notify the guidance department, and we'll change it. It's as simple as that.
You know how they get things in meetings and they'll hand it back?
Listen, I mean, you want a paper copy, I'll.
Can we do, would that be agreeable, so the board has that information?
But I don't even know why it should be, I mean, maybe I'm just stupid, but I don't even understand why it should be who got accepted and denied and waitlisted and it being out there.
It's not who, it's hotel trends, so we can see where.
It's good to see the good colleges that they're. But listen, but you know who children 1, 2, and 3 are. So to me, that's personal information that's given on at least the first three kids. If other people know what class rank it is, I feel like it's like a HIPAA law. It's not, but that's, we're school officials. So if your kid. I'm not allowed to tell anybody, like, anyone else, but I could know, because I'm a considered school official. But this is now already in our, I mean, you could get this online, because it's in our packet, correct? If this is in our. No, not in public. The only thing that's online is the agenda.
The agenda's online, and the minutes are online.
So this is in.
No, that is not online, so we certainly. If you are asking me to tell the guidance department not to do this in the future, we can do that. I'm not looking to do anything other than listen to what you want to do. There's no names attached for ranking there.
But you know who the ranks are. It affects less.
I'm saying, if that's what you want us to do and not do it next year, that's fine. We've always done it this way, you know?
I think it's a good.
Could someone request this information, though, for, for freedom of information? Could they request it whether you put it out or not? Like, how did, I'm just curious, now that you brought that up.
I don't know. I can probably request, pretty much, as we've seen, anything.
Right, I know that there's, that happens sometimes, but I didn't know if that is, Vince, do you know by any chance?
Well.
That's FAWI-able.
If that kind of information is FAWI-able?
No, I, I, in all honesty, I'm sure it's FAWI-able, but the bottom line is, it's telling us as a Board of Ed, where these kids are applying to, what, what ones they're getting accepted to, not getting accepted to which else, the guidance counselors, when the kids come in for guidance, and the guidance counselor say, "Well, you know what? Here's where your SAT score is, these are the colleges that will get, will get accepted", okay? So I, I think it's valuable information. I really don't see, the only problem is.
I'm trying to think of the problem.
I just don't think class ranking needs to be attached to it. If you do it as a broad spectrum and mess it all around, that's one thing, but everybody knows who 1, 2, and 3 are. And that's what my. I think you're feeling very personal about it, because, because it does affect your son. It's not just personal, um, it, it, to me, you have certain laws to protect children, and just from a, I mean, it doesn't matter if it's 1, 2, 3. If you know somebody who's maybe lower in the rank, I mean, it's just a lot of personal information, and I don't feel it needs to, yes, my son is attached to it, but.
I don't see it as personal information as.
But it is, because it has class rank, so you know who, and it says in our packet who the first three kids are, and, I mean, I don't know if number one would want us to know where they were accepted and denied. I can still tell you who the top ones are. Well, that's what I'm saying, so how does that. But it's not going to the public, it's just going to the board.
Talk about how we possibly reformat it.
I can give it to you a hard copy, and then you can give it back to me.
I'm happy to like.
But I don't even know why, I mean, it's free, we know that.
If you don't want it, I don't give it. Guidance generates it, if you don't want it, you don't stand.
Identities are protected. I think that's your point.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was told if something was brought to the meeting, it's FAWI-able.
Right.
That if you.
Most competitive, right?
Yeah, most competitive.
This is now a.
Which is better?
Absolutely.
And not just the top ranking, I mean, if there's kids for down, trying to get inside, and didn't make it, they might not want to say they were denied. Oh, I got into this one, I'm going to this one.
Yeah, but, but who. But that means the guidance council can't even, can't even put that together. But who knows who number 42 is? You know what I'm saying? All it says, all it says to us as a board is, these kids are applying to great schools, and look at how many schools, they're not just applying to one or two. But he already said that with his statistic of how many are going to the ID leads and how many are going to the.
You don't have to go. I'm not looking to, it's not an argument.
But it shouldn't even be out there, it's my.
If you don't want to.
I don't feel it should even be out there.
It's always has been, it's never been a problem with FERPA, because there's no name attached, and I will request that the guidance office not do it.
We could reformat it to get the data without how it can identify.
We can fix them.
We can do that.
If that's what.
This data, I feel, is good.
We can, that's, you know, that's the budget, that's an easy fix. Like, that's.
Like, this is all we need, as far as.
It's up to the board to.
Well, that's all you need. That's not what I need.
So you want to know what number 1, 2, 3 and 4 are?
Excuse me. Don't say, "This is what we need". Say, "That's what you need". What I need is, I like the way they presented it to me, because that helps me out a lot, as to what our kids are doing, and how they're applying to mostly competitive, highly competitive, very competitive, and competitive. It's very, very information.
And where they're getting denied.
Huh?
And where they're getting denied.
Well, where they got denied, where they got waitlisted, where they got accepted.
Most kids go for a reach school and don't get into their reach school. That's, that's just common. That's just common. Nobody, they always encourage you to go for a reach school. It doesn't mean anything about a child, because they got denied to a school.
And I'm saying to the board, if the board feels that they want to do something differently, direct me to do something differently.
Can we just suggest or bring other optional formats and present them, and see? I, I'm happy to work with guidance, I mean.
If you don't want to, if you don't want to.
I want it, so don't include me in that bracket if I want it.
Yeah, we can bring different options.
In paper, in paper copy, or scramble.
We can think of some different, I mean, this year's what's done, has done, but then we can think of.
But it won't, it won't be posted on the website.
But is it FAWI-able, somebody wants to know?
I do not believe so, but I mean, I, I don't know, that's, that's a question that someone else would have to answer.
First of all, there's a lot of things that could, could not, depends on if somebody does go for it, and they have to make an argument. It can go either way. That's what law's all about. It's not that something is definite one way. Is it FAWI-able? It may be, it may not be, but some parent, or some organization, when I took them in and say, "I want a copy this year", superintendent says, "I'm not giving it to you. It's classified information", then they file the lawsuit, and then we'll find out. Well, nobody up at this board is saying whether it's FAWI-able or not FAWI-able. That's why they have courts to make that decision for the people.
Well, I believe it was under, what was it, what was the law that this was under, that was set? It was like a HIPAA law.
FERPA, no, no, it's FERPA.
It would be FERPA, not HIPAA. Yeah, this is a FERPA.
The FERPA, we have a FERPA policy, which is here.
Yeah.
And it clearly states that the right to consent to disclosure of personally identified information containing students' records, extent of FERPA authorized disclosure, officials with legitimate educational interests, which would be all of you, and to fulfill his or her professional responsibility goes into, without prior consent, a list of things that you can do, that's eligible, names, addresses, phone listings, email, student's date of birth, student's.
So this says 1, 2, and 3, these names are already in here.
Participation in organized activities in sports, the student's weight and height as a member of an athletic team, honors and awards received by students. So we're, we're saying, we, we didn't put names attached to that.
But the names are attached in the packets, so is that a borderline?
If you want me to scramble it, it never has been, it's never been brought up, and we've done it every year. If you're saying that collectively you want me to change the format, we can do that. I'm not arguing with you. I'm saying, this is the way it's always been done. We've always provided all of this rich information, data, so when we say to you, "These are our kids, 94% are going off to school, there's where they applied, this is where they had success, this is where they rated, this is where they didn't", it's the reality of it, and if you want it differently, we can present it differently.
I just feel like with it being listed, who the first three children are, that, that goes by the FERPA, whatever.
Well, the, the names weren't on the list, so.
No, but the names are in the packet, so.
Well, the FERPA thing will be the list that we put out, which doesn't have the names, but anyway, if you want it changed, we'll change it.
Good to the board?
Well, I went to National Honor Society induction, and it was wonderful. It was a beautiful ceremony. I saved the program, as if anybody would like to see them. 24 students. I, I love just going and listening to where they're going to college and what they want to study, a lot in the medical field, a real lot in the medical field, but it was very, very nice. You guys can peruse those.
I attended the author's study at Jerome Harasik, receiving a class, and it was very nicely done, and teachers always put out their own money, and I understand they can pay for all the books that the students had. And it was very nice seeing the process that the kids went through, and also that the kids were given a chance to public speak, which is always a good thing, because most adults are hesitant to speak in public.
Did they read their books? Is that what they did?
They read their books, and they got up, and they read their books, and it was very nice. They were very proud, and anytime you can promote public speaking, kids to get used to it is great. And I'm, I understand she's not the only one that does it with the books. Lisa?
Lisa Douglas was something different, but it's, it's same and it's similar to. I'm just aware of Lisa and Amy Aiken.
It was very nice.
Mrs. Sigmar.
Something different.
Here's the third.
I went to the high school scholarship night. It was very nice. So many kids were getting awards, and it was a very nice night. A lot of presenters, a lot of recipients, so.
That's a long night.
It was really long, but, you know.
It's nice for them.
Yeah.
That's a good one.
What are we under?
Good to the board.
They used to do that and the award ceremony in the same night.
Are we done with good to the board?
I can hear you what?
Are we done with good to the board? Does anyone have anything else?
Yeah, I have something to say.
Sure.
I really like the way this high school yearbook is dotted. And I really like all the colleges that the kids applied to, how they got accepted. And what I see in here is, I see a bunch of students that were very successful as seniors, especially those who went through the North Bradford school system from grade kindergarten, 12. And even those that came in somewhere along the intermediate level, whatever. So what I see is students, athletes, for a small school, this school has really been on the map with all those sports programs that are going on in North Bradford. And one of the things that we, a lot of people don't really look at, is they have fun doing it, because I see all the pictures of all the things they did that were crazy and wild, and I know you guys had something to do with that. So I applaud you guys for being there today. That's all.
The yearbook has the.
I love the cover.
Sunflower, and it's, it's raised and on the back, and it was from the backfield at Alder Farm, and the kids did a wonderful job depicting that, so congratulations. It's a lot of work to put that together.
Yeah.
Beautiful. Presenting press.
Hello, I'm John Florio, president of the Maintenance and Custodial Union. I know it's very easy for everyone to say, "Cut custodians", this chairperson, but two years ago, you cut us, and you say that you have seven guys within that three-building complex, although all the guys would just make up the difference they can. The middle man in the auditorium is already making up the difference in the high school from the guy who cut last time. He's not gonna be able to go over to the intermediate school. That leaves one man to clean the intermediate school at night. Mr. Owork, you think that could happen? Thank you for your honesty, sir. It can't happen. Your school facility says you want clean buildings. You'll fail school tools for schools. You'll have the health department knocking on your door, okay? Can any of you tell me what you know about the custodial maintenance staff?
We can't respond to that.
Anyone?
No, you know, we're not banned.
We're the only group that saves the Board of Education money, and the taxpayers. I'll look into the camera and tell you, taxpayers too. We do all work in-house. We sub nothing out unless it's beyond our scope or a special license. You could ask Mr. Winicki. I'm not talking hundreds of dollars. I'm not talking thousands. I'm talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. I see Marcy shaking her head, because she knows. I'll give you an example. High school never had science labs, okay? We take regular classrooms, turn them into science labs. The estimates for outside vendors were $110,000 a room. Our group did them for 19. Brought the city water up to the two schools. Outside vendor, $375,000, our group did it for $50,000. When the, when the town council put the two roofs on the buildings, they failed to do the rooftop ventilation. When the town council put the two roofs on the buildings, they failed to do the rooftop ventilation. $875,000 outside vendor for the high school, $550 for Totucket. Our group did it for an eighth of that price. All the VCT tile laid after asbestos over the past 20 years, we've done. An exorbitant savings to the town. Office suites in Central Office, office suites, Totucket Valley. Not at low cost, because we do it. I'm afraid to keep kicking the dog, our guys are gonna not do this job anymore, because it's not part of our job. They do it as a goodwill, because they're proud of their job. They went to these schools, they have kids in these schools, and they're taxpayers. They, we don't have to do those jobs. When we hear what needs to be done, principals come to us, they want something, we meet with Central Office. Can we do this? We could do it, here's the cost, okay, do it. They know it's a savings. We're the only group that saves you money. You cut another guy, that building is not gonna get cleaned. I'll tell you right now, we're understaffed, under-equipped, and every outside organization that you brought in to do a survey has told you that over the past 20 years. You cannot cut another custodian. That man gave you a budget. Your job is to oversee, advise. I'll give you advice. The town is the one that took 50 people out of the insurance plan and left you holding the bag. Why don't you go to the town and see if they can make up the difference for you? They caused that difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, then I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session